All right, so now, because we don't have our regular board chair present, it is for our policy that we just adopted courtesy of Howard Miller, who is joining us today. We are to have the longest-serving member of this body serve as our interim chair in the meantime. And based off of attendees, I think that Director Larson, that would be you, because you have been on our board the longest. So if you wouldn't mind stepping in as our interim chair for this meeting.
I would be happy to if I can find unmute myself. There we go.
Thank you.
And let me pull the agenda up. And do we have a script that we typically use to run a meeting like this? Otherwise, I can just do without a script.
No, not really. We're just, of course, running this meeting under the governor's executive order. That's why we're virtual. We do not have a forum. There will be no action taken.
Okay, very good. Then, thank you. I will call to order the special meeting of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority on Friday, February the 5th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with State of California Executive Order N-29-20, dated March 17th, 2020, in consideration of the coronavirus. All members of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors and staff will participate in this meeting by teleconference. Members of the public may observe this meeting electronically by accessing the link on the agenda. Public comments that were sent in advance will be read by the board clerk or members of the public will also have an opportunity to provide comments during, at the appropriate point during this meeting. Public may provide comments on any matter not listed, or any matter listed on the agenda. Speakers are customarily limited to three minutes each. However, the meeting chair may increase or decrease the time allotted to each speaker based on the number of speakers, the length of the agenda, et cetera. Speaking time will not be decreased to less than one minute. So let's have roll call, please.
Thank you. And just by way of ease, I'm just going to go by how you are showing up on your screen, on my screen. So I'll start with alternate Director Mekachuk.
President.
Thank you. Alternate Director Way.
Yeah.
Director Willie.
Here.
Director Walia.
Here.
Alternate Director Klein.
Here.
Director Larson.
Here.
Alternate Director Meadows.
Here.
Director Hilton.
Here.
And alternate Director Armandares.
Here.
Thank you. And I see no additional directors or alternates present.
Okay, thank you. So next, we go to public comment on matters not listed on the agenda. The public may provide comments on any matter not listed on this agenda, provided that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. However, that time may be increased or decreased based on the number of speakers, et cetera. Speaking time will not be less than one minute. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? I'm not, if you do wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I will close the public comment period. And now we move on to our regular calendar. We have one item. Item one, S V C E Board Orientation Workshop Overview of S V C E. So I will hand it over to staff. All right. Thank you very much. And welcome to all the board members and alternates. We are going through quite a transformation this year. As when you look at our board, we have five new board members out of 13, and we have eight new alternates out of 13. So of the 26 board and alternates, we have a 50% turnover. So orientation meetings such as these are super important to continue the business of our agency. And welcome Director Chua from Milpitas to the meeting. So the agenda for the meeting, I'm going to go through a short overview presentation, after which Andrea will be our next speaker. She'll talk about general board information. And we will have our emeritus board members Rod Sinks and Howard Miller talk to you about effective board governance, the view from the past board members and their experience. We will then have our staff provide you, Pamela will provide you a general overview of S V C E, followed by Monica and Melissa will give you a broad overview of power supply and legislative and regulatory activities. This is meant to kind of give you a framing, high-level kind of introduction. We will follow this up with two additional hour-and-a-half introductory sessions where you'll be meeting with department directors, who are all on the call today, and you can see them by video. You see Don Bray, Account Services Amy Bailey, in charge of decarbonization efforts, Amrit Singh, our CFO, Melissa Charles, Legislative and Regulatory Policy, and Monica Padilla from Power Supply. So each of them will be talking to you in greater detail in our subsequent sessions. And then, of course, we are going to collect your questions so that if there's any one area that you would like more information on, we can just do a one-on-one and do a deep dive on that. Because it really is vital that we get you as engaged as we can so that we can continue the business of this agency. So with that, Andrea, would you put up my presentation, please? And so I'm going to start as a high level, and we can go to the next slide. And I'm going to tell you the, this slide and the slide after this are the key slides for you. This shows what California's CO2 emission reduction goals are through the year 2045. And what I want you to look at is the top part of that chart from, which basically goes through 2020. So if you look at that chart and it goes from 2000 to 2020, you see it's kind of going down a little bit. Great, so we've made some progress. But look at 2020 through 2045. Look at the slope of that line. See, in California, when you think about, you know, we think we're really on the forefront of reducing emissions and things like that. But see what we've done in the last 20 years. We think we've done a lot. That isn't anything compared to what we need to do. So as you, when your board members, you know, kind of like everything we are doing is saying, are we being bold enough? Are we doing enough to bend this carbon curve? And of course, we want to balance what it's going to take with cost. So this is a super important, high-level chart that we want you to be grounded with. And remember that this emission reduction chart is not only about electricity. It includes the entire economy. So it includes essentially transportation, buildings, and agriculture too. But this is for the entire state of California. So now, let's move to S V C E. Next slide, please. So this slide kind of mirrors the previous slide. But each bar has been broken up into the emissions from electricity, from the, I'm talking from the bottom to the top of each bar. So if you look at the first bar, you have the teal line, teal part of the bar. That's electricity. The next is natural gas. And the top part of the bar is transportation. So when you see the forecast, everything to the right of that green dotted line, you'll see that 2020 electricity emissions have really reduced tremendously. And that's because of what S V C has done in our territory. But you'll see that natural gas and transportation, there's barely a dent. And you see the green downward-facing arrow on the right-hand side? Those are our goals, right? So it's not just keeping our electricity emissions down. Our goals and all of us as in, you know, S V C and all our cities, we want to reduce those emissions. And there's only that much we can do as S V C E. There's a lot you can do as a city. And then, of course, regionally and statewide, there's much we can do. Given the new administration in Washington DC, we have an amazing tailwind with us today that we did not have a month ago. Where President Biden has laid out some amazing goals, which in some cases have gone even beyond what California has put in place. So we have a even bigger vision and ahead of us. So next slide. So what is S V C E doing when you think of these really challenging kind of big-picture goals we have? Here's the mission that our board adopted. So our purpose and destination, right? So the missions on the top, which is provide carbon-free, affordable, and reliable electricity. That's the foundation of our business. That's what takes up most of our money. But to really get to transportation and buildings, you've got to offer innovative programs for the S V C community. So electricity is a necessary condition, so to speak, but it's not sufficient to really bend the carbon curve. And the very challenging measure we have is reduce emissions as written out here by 2021, 25, and 2030. The key thing for you is it's not just S V C, it's S V C E working with member agencies. So the number of things that we have no control of, but you and your city councils have control of. So that's something that as we go through our journey here, you're going to hear more about. Next slide. So we have the orange part of this slide is our pathway. So how are we going to come to our destination? So the top part of this is essentially energy, buildings, and transportation. Those are the pathways we're going to go down. And we're going to do it through outreach and education, what we have here, right? Innovation, et cetera. And we're going to do it with this team of 31 employees. So it's a pretty small team. Next slide. So how do we get that mission? How do we break down that mission into things we're going to do? So we have an S V C strategic plan. And you're going to get this presentation after this. We'll send it to you. So there's a link to the actual strategic plan document, which the board has adopted in October 2020. And we update it each month. Next slide. Under the strategic plan, you essentially have three, which I say, big sub-sector plans, which the board has adopted for each of these different sectors that we've talked about, electricity, buildings, and transportation. And the board has, so as we've evolved in our organization, the first thing was electricity. We did that in 2018. We adopted that plan, updated it in 2020. So these are the three big plans that we have adopted to help us with all three sectors. So this is just to, and we get into the details of this in our department-specific briefing. So you'll really get into what exactly we are doing. But I just want to frame for you that we have the board's adopted plans in each of these areas. So now, how do you make sure that we are following this plan? So let's go to the next slide. So this is where, from your perspective, you need to have oversight and provide us policy direction, right? So over the last few years, we figured out, you know, we've evolved to have some alignment between our strategic goals, your evaluating my performance, and how we determine our S V C E work plan. So we've kind of put together, you know, so typically you will start evaluating me in May. And through May and August of each year, we update the strategic plan. We get input from you, we get input from staff, and we update it to change as in the internal and external environment changes. In the September timeframe, you also get a chance to change strategies and priorities when you adopt the budget. You typically will finish my evaluation in the September, October timeframe. Then we get into a period of implementation, and then you get into the cycle again, where CEO evaluation and updating the strategic plan again. So we have, you will have opportunities right through the year to actually not just set policy, but also have a feedback loop going. So this, I've gone through the challenge, what we are doing. And so now, let me tell you a little bit of the progress we've made so far, which is in our next slide. So over the last several years, I've summarized our progress in this slide. And I'll just summarize, we have got investment-grade ratings from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's last year and this year. So that summarizes a lot of different positive activities that we've done. And down below the bottom box, I'll take you to the second bullet here, which is, there's been a total of $69 million of rate savings since our launch. And the first bullet talks about a 24% reduction in emissions so far. So that's the key thing, right? Reduce emissions and be affordable. So this is what we've done so far in terms of a summary. So what's coming up next? So let's go to the next slide. So as far as our future work is concerned, again, in each of these areas, power supply, mobility, and buildings, we have got to work in every one of these areas to make sure we get on that green downward-facing arrow. And you're going to see a lot of that coming at you over the next several years. But that's the nature of our work. The next slide is focused on just the coming year. What are we going to do in 2021? So you'll see in our strategic plan, we have a ton of work, but we wanted to highlight five areas. And these are the board's strategic focus areas on, that the board asked us to focus on. So these are the five areas. I'm not going to go into too much detail on this other than saying, for us to get to a more sophisticated enterprise, we have to invest in more resources, enterprise-wide systems, metrics, and tools, at the same time focusing on equity, to making sure as we get through this transformation, we're not leaving back, leaving behind those who may not have required resources or information to participate in this energy transformation. I'm going to go to the next slide, but not really get into any detail. This is just for your reference. I don't expect you to read this. It's a little bit more detail on each of those focus areas, what you will be seeing over the next 24 months. And then I'll end with the last slide, which is a repeat of a previous slide, which here's our mission. We have some pathways. You have a small and mighty staff helping get there. So with that, I'm going to wrap up. Apologize if I went a little fast, but we have a lot on the agenda for you. Happy to take a couple of questions before we go to the next module. Okay, thank you for that presentation. If any board members or directors or alternate directors have questions, please raise your virtual hand now. And I see two hands up. So alternate Director Way is first.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I look at the chart, 2020 to 2030 reduction, but the natural gas reduction is almost none. So is there a special reason for that?
Yeah. And we'll get into that into a lot more detail. It is extremely difficult to reduce transportation and natural gas. So we have taken the first steps, and your city actually adopted something called a REACH code, which basically said, hey, all new buildings, you're going to reduce gas consumption there. But we have 230,000 residential customers who are using natural gas. How do you get them to change? How do you get them to change? How do you switch out 230,000 gas-water heaters? It is, you know, orders of magnitude more than what we've ever done before. So it is extremely challenging. Amy Bailey and our team have created a building decarbonization plan in collaboration with all 13 agencies. We'll get into that in detail in one of the next sessions, where we'll tell you what our specific plans are to reduce natural gas usage.
Thank you. I have one more question. And so I attended a couple of meetings, you know, by listening in. And I, because you just said we saved $65, $69 million for our consumers, but it looks like our savings rate would go down because it would go down from 4% to 5% to 1%. Is that going to be a trend? Are we able to, you know, increase it in the future? Be more incentive to our users?
Yeah, we, we may. So it's a balance between being financially strong and responsible and how much of a discount we provide our customers. Since inception, our customers have always paid less than PG&E. So that's kind of overall guideline that the board has provided us. So the differences from a 4% discount to a 1% discount. And this is how you're also balancing the credit rating that you have from the rating agency. So we have to be strong financially and conservative financially if we want to have, you know, a long life and actually be able to put money aside for local investment. The only way we make money is to get money from our ratepayers. We put that in reserves. Any money that we think is available addition to what we have in our reserves, we can put it for decarbonization programs to reduce natural gas usage and reduce the amount of gasoline vehicles that we have on our roads. You're on mute. She said, okay.
That's my questions.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So next up is Director Willie, followed by alternate Director Klein.
So my question pertains to, I always like to start at the high level and get my arms around that, but then I can better digest and move on this, on the more concentrated issue. And so clean energy, solar, wind, geothermal, we know our insatiable desire for energy and how much of it is supplied by the fossil fuel today. And I don't think I've heard too much about the nuclear component. I mean, if we were only relying on, you know, the three, the wind, the solar, geothermal, it seems like the task is almost probably insurmountable. But to get that fossil fuel out of the picture, do you have some kind of few words on, on how the nuclear plays into that? I mean, do we advocate for nuclear or, or not?
We do not advocate for nuclear. And I also say that we can get into more detail when we have a subsequent meeting where we talk about power supply. The short answer is we do not advocate for nuclear. The last nuclear plant in California will be closing down in 2025. We do get a small allocation of nuclear right now that the board has supported that we take so that'll save our customers money. So right now, we are taking a little nuclear from this plant that is going to close down in 2025. But your question has to do with new nuclear and the long term. I don't believe that California will have nuclear for quite a while. But it's not only nuclear that is going to be part of this energy, clean energy transact, transition. We expect it will also be hydrogen in some way and long-duration energy storage. And there are a lot of unknowns once you get past about 15 years or so. It's a great question. California has set some very ambitious goals, but we actually don't know how to get there perfectly from a technology and affordability standpoint. We know we can get there, but then it's too expensive. So how do you get there and not be too expensive? So that's a fantastic policy question. And that's what we'll keep coming back to with the Integrated Resource Plan, which was one of the pillars that we talked about. Okay, thank you. Next up, alternate Director Klein, followed by Director Chua.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, I appreciate the presentation. I did have a question about the natural gas portion. From looking at the projections that you were showing, it looked like even with, you know, some of the, some of the, let's say, REACH codes that, in green building codes that have been started, put in place, there was a dramatic or relatively large increase in percentage at least, but also in actual amount of natural gas usage increase between just a few years ago where we stand, you know, in the next year, and then 10 years from now. Can, do you have any reflection on why that increase is dramatic?
So I'll talk about just the percentage increase, right? So in terms of what it is, in terms of contribution to 2020, obviously, natural gas is much higher. And I'd be happy to have Amy or Don Bray also pitching to answer that question as to why 2020 is higher than the historical. But overall, even the REACH codes that we've adopted, and we've had 11 of 13 agencies adopt REACH codes, frankly, though that's a very good step, it's a very small step. It is not going to get us anywhere close to what we need to get to. For us to really get to something bigger, natural gas, we have to, we have to do a lot more. We have to get to existing homes. So whether it's remodels or existing homes, and that's part of our building decarbonization plan, and the whole natural gas transition, right? So it's not only, we, let me also step back and say, we need natural gas power plants for the next 20 years. That is a given. It will not go away. So as much as you may hear, all of us want natural gas plants to go away, it will not go away for at least 20 years. It's just the nature of it. We may be able to reduce it and maybe not build as many new gas plants, but we don't have the technology to run the system reliably without natural gas. But let me ask Amy to answer, Amy, maybe, to answer the first part of the question. Or Don.
I can, I can.
Okay.
Jump in here if you want, and then follow. But yeah, in terms of natural gas usage, it does tend to vary quite a bit year to year based on weather. So that's something that we always have to normalize for. And when we, when we really look at the actuals for 2020, that'll be reflected. Growth is still impacting this number. And it'll be interesting to see how 2020 actuals play out. Because of COVID, we've seen an uptick in residential electricity use. I expect we'll see a significant uptick in residential gas use for the year. And hopefully, this is going to be a one-time thing. And then another thing we got to keep an eye on is fuel cell usage. Industrial customers are deploying fuel cells, and they use natural gas in the place of electricity to create electricity on site. So that's, that's another factor to look at. Over time, the REACH codes are going to help us, you know, reduce at least, you know, per capita, the, the amount of gas use. But, but that explains in part, these are some of the factors that are making this, this transition so hard to effect. Yeah, we have to reverse the direction of the gross, the growth in gas usage.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Director Chua. You're on mute, Director Chua.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm a new council member. In the last few weeks, I, the staff consultant and the, the Energy and Sustainability Commission, they gave a presentation of what our consultants are doing. And I was kind of disappointed because they were, they were focusing on a dashboard. And a dashboard is just to show how many, the percentage to lower to get into the 2045 goal. And I'm really confused, and I would love to get directions on how cities, what the cities should be doing now to get to that target. And I think a dashboard is not the answer, so. So I'm open for, I think you might want, you're going to go over this with us. So if that's just my question for now.
Thank you. I think we'll take that offline. I think Amy Bailey will follow up with you. And we are also, we'll be in touch with Elaine Marshall, one of your staff members, also the alternate director, to follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. I know we have a lot of material to get through, so I see no other hands raised. Let's continue with the presentation.
Great. I'm up next. Andrea Pizano, Board Clerk. I've had the pleasure of at least corresponding with you all via email already. So hello and welcome. I will be brief with my slides, really just some general board information for you all. So we'll go over your new board member checklist, important governing docs, in addition to just general board info. So here, we've created a little checklist for you. So Form 700 filings. I've reached out to you all upon your appointment to this board in your requirements for Form 700. Even though you do file for your cities and respective other committees, we do require that you file for this agency here. And you have 30 days in which to do that since your appointment. Oath of office upon getting appointed, I will swear you in. And in fact, I think we have some members here that have not. So I would like to take just a minute to go ahead and swear you in and make you official, so we can check that off of our list. So if I have not sworn you in yet, if you could please show your videos and unmute yourselves.
Does Andrea, does automatic counts too?
Yes, please, everybody. Alternate Director Armandadis, I don't know if you're available for video.
Yeah, one second. I'm gonna get to better lighting. Maybe brush my hair.
We don't judge. There's no judging. All right. And while you're waiting, this is the same oath that you take usually for your, your cities and committees. You should be pretty familiar.
My kitten wants to be part of the action, sorry.
She can raise one paw.
All right, awesome. Yes, if you could please raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Larry Klein.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith to the religions.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose evasion.
Take this obligation freely.
Not any mental reservation or
and that I, and that I will well or faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties on which I'm about to enter.
Great, thank you so much. So we can go ahead and check that off of your new board member checklist. And just moving right along here. So I wanted to point out the code of ethics policy here. It's linked. We will have these presentations posted, but similar to your code of conduct. It's, it has kind of what we, how we feel about in terms of gifts and things like that. So it's just our ethics policy that we'd like you to review. And important governing documents are JPA. So this is the document that each of your cities have signed in order to make us an organization. So this lists the powers of this authority, who is participants, in addition to some of the governance and how we run. And kind of a subset of that is our operating rules and regulations or bylaws, as you may be more familiar with. And this is kind of the process of how we run our meetings and how we appoint our chair and vice chair, et cetera. So again, I have them linked here and this will be posted for you to reference at a later date. Just general board info, we typically have our board meetings at 7:00 PM, the second Wednesday of the month. However, we do have a discussion at our board meeting next week to change that time to 5:30 during this pandemic. So stay tuned. Materials are distributed Friday before board meetings. That was sent out this morning, right before we met for next week. And I wanted to point out our committees, we have a legislative and regulatory responses to industry transition for 2021 Ad Hoc Committee, an Audit Committee, and a Finance and Administration Committee. These are all having appointments made at our next board meeting. So if you have not submitted an interest for any of these and you would like to participate, please let me know. These will be ratified at our meeting next week, but we would love your involvement in each of these committees. And that concludes my slides, but if anybody has any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. If there are any brief questions, we can take them now. Please raise your virtual hand. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So let's move on with the next part of the presentation.
So the next part is going to be effective board governance, the view from past board members. And we're gonna take 30 minutes on this. It's gonna be handled by Rod and Howard. And so over to you gentlemen.
Hopefully, somebody's got our slides to show. I want to make a comment just because I saw the beginning and I see everybody's eyes. I just want to remind everybody that when the state set all these goals in motion, they did not make Silicon Valley Clean Energy responsible for the state carbon reduction goals, right? We are authorized under statute to provide energy. And there's a whole bunch of rules about how that happens in details. But we've gone beyond the core mission of just providing electricity to use some of that excess money to focus on the issue pressing in the state. And so that's the whole bending of the carbon curve. But still remember that 95% of what we have to do is get at good prices and deliver energy on schedule for all of our customers. The extra 5% is where you're going to spend 80% of your time, which is how we bend the carbon curves. And I want to, I want to answer the question that Grish was very polite about. Who owns the hardest part of this whole cutting the carbon stuff down, the natural gas and all of that? Each of you do in your cities. Your cities are responsible for the built environments within your city. And so, so while we're gonna do stuff to agitate and help like reach codes, this is, that was a drop in the bucket compared to what each of your cities has to do in the next 20 years. So you just kind of, to give a little bit of context to the whole organization, you will think the organization is all about bending the carbon curve because there's so much effort there. But legislatively, your cities are the ones that are much more responsible than that than us. We're just, we want to be the agent of change, the catalyst, if you will. Anyways, Rod and I were kind of here from the beginning, and so we've kind of worked up a Rod and Howard show to talk about the history. And we got to start with Rod. CCAs didn't just form, and I watched Andrea showing all of these great procedures and stuff. When we started on day one, we had nothing. And so everything that you're seeing now, all the presentations, the the structure, everything was grown from ground zero. And before ground zero was a giant coming together of some big cities to figure out how to analyze the data and do this for real. Because you can't just say we're gonna do a CCA. There was a whole bunch of hoops that had to go through. And Rod was one of the founding members pre-Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So we've got to start with Rod to tell us about that story a little bit.
Thank you, Howard. Let's advance to the next slide. So, you know, based on the questions today, I think this agency is in good hands. I'm impressed. I know you'll come up to speed and learn quickly. And as, as Howard said, you know, if we think Washington has all the answers to climate change, I have news for you and I have a story to tell you. We're gonna go over in the next 30 minutes, our history. We're gonna think about how SVC is both a business and a public agency, so we're somewhat unique in that. And then we have a few ideas about tips for you basically on how to govern the agency effectively as board members. Next slide. So you may know that in the period from 2007 to 2010, legislation following PG&E's bankruptcy around 1999 enabled the formation of community choice energy agencies in the state. And Marine Clean, Marine Clean Energy was the first and the pioneer. For three years, they fought off $50 million of funding from PG&E and really incredible attempts to try to block their formation as a challenge to the authority of PG&E's monopoly in Northern California. And, and the regulatory authority. Nobody was happy with, with this idea. But they came to us at the Cities Association in 2014. One of the women who had established MCE, her, her name was Sean Marshall. And she told us this fantastic story and we said, geez, we'd like some of this too. We know that there are a couple of communities in our county, Palo Alto and Santa Clara, that own their own utilities. Those were, those utilities were established over 100 years ago. And we said, we want in on this too. We want an alternative to PG&E. We want an opportunity to shape our future. Largely in mind was the idea of reducing our carbon emissions. So let's advance the slide once here. So three of the cities really got started with this, having the seed planted from that Cities Association meeting in the spring of 2014. Three of us as mayors of these cities, we happened to all be mayors in 2015, were highly interested. We were sitting, here's my story. We were sitting in the White House, Obama's White House, maybe the last time the conference of, US Conference of Mayors was entertained fully at the, at the White House. And deputies from the Department of Energy were telling us about this fantastic new problem, program that they had to bend down the carbon curve. They said, we have a package for you, a deal for you. We have low interest finance program. So you can replace all your conventional streetlights with more efficient bulbs. And with all of this, if we all do this, we can reduce our carbon footprint about 1%. And we said, well, that's cool, but you know, it's so 2010, we already did that. We've been there, done that. We talked about wanting to move the needle in order of magnitude more with community choice energy. Have you heard of that? We asked. Would you like to help us with that? There wasn't much response. They were enamored with their own program. So January 2015 came and went, and we came back from Washington, determined to put the pedal to the metal on an EV, I guess, not a gas powered car and, and get this, this agency going following in the, the, the steps, Marine Clean Energy. Next slide. So we formed what was called at that time, the Silicon Valley CC Partnership. We hired Sean Marshall's nonprofit called Lean Energy U.S. And they conducted a feasibility study. We had to enlist all the cities in allowing us to collect data from PG&E on loads. So that was the business part of the study. How much load could we service, right? What was the market opportunity? And then a governance study, how would we put ourselves together to reach fair decisions? And so by the end of 2015, we, we had gotten there and most every city that who was, that was eligible that had given us data eventually came on board. I remember going down to a few council meetings, Gilroy, Los Gatos and so forth. And there were a lot of questions, but we formed in 2016, our first board meeting, I believe, was in April. And through formation, we made a goal setting and plans that year. And there were key staffing decisions. Helping us at that time was a, let's, let's advance the slide once. Helping us at that time was a grassroots group called Carbon Free Mountain View, still very active today. A lot of formational ideas and the key one was the key goal that we set that I would call certainly audacious was the idea that we wanted to be carbon free. We wanted our power supply to be carbon free, not on a minute by minute or hour by hour, day by day basis, but over the course of the year. Could we buy enough hydro, wind, water and solar and so forth to do that? And could we get started within a year rather than the two year plan that had been proposed as a result of the feasibility study?
Let me, let me, let me hand off here for a second, Rod.
Sure.
Yeah, just, you know, the beginning story of these cities getting together, all the cities were approached and we all had the opportunity to join in. And in every city, there was a financial commitment, some of it was large. And some of the cities, I would say straight out, had climate deniers engaged on their councils. Even cities represented amongst us right now. It doesn't seem like that long ago, but five, six years ago, seven years ago. This was on the verge of total crazy talk and having councils kick up money. And my council, it kind of went around and we weren't willing to join the first four in the study. I want to thank the first four that were there because at least they were enlightened enough to include all of our cities in their analysis. So we could later join. And even when we all got together in 2016, this required a financial commitment. Hundreds of thousands of dollars for many cities. And it was supposed to be paid back if ever over a three year period. And I, Rod alluded to it, but I just want to talk about that very first, very first board meeting. Rod was appointed our chair. We just hired our CEO. We had four staff members which were like being paid for out of the seed money. They were being kicked in from different cities. And they sat there in front of us and proposed a 27 month plan to be 70% renewable energy. And, you know, Rod's a physicist, I'm an engineer, and Liz Gibbons, who's still with you, is, is an architect. And the three of us in that board meeting had this discussion that went like this. If carbon mattered, why are we doing renewable? And a bunch of you guys are sitting here going, wait a minute, aren't they the same thing? No, they're not. Talk to staff. Renewable doesn't include hydro because California is hydro rich in the north and hydro poor in the south. So we couldn't have a political definition of renewable in California that included hydro. It included burning garbage in Stanislaus County. Apparently they have a lot of garbage there. There are a lot of weird things in this political definition of renewable. So staff saying renewable kind of struck some of us as odd. And we actually kind of persuaded an entire board on the spot to switch from renewable to carbon free. And again, Rod hit it, right? We're Paris Accord, we're annual accounting, it's all a shell game. Now that's what some climate that I'm just gonna tell you. We provide enough energy on an annual basis to meet our full load and it comes from carbon free sources. But it doesn't mean that every minute of the day we're providing energy. But there was the poor staff saying 70% is cutting edge and 27 months. And here is a board saying that's insufficient. We want 100% carbon free and we want it in a year. And that was our first board meeting and our brand new CEO. And so you've got to understand this dynamic of an organization that you have to build when you have that kind of board. You know, Rod will talk about this a little bit, but again, since we're not annual, we asked staff two years later, year and a half later, to get a solar plus storage. Staff is going to explain to you how solar is absolutely worthless in the state of California in the months of March and April. We have so much solar in the state that we have to pay other states to take our energy, right? On an instantaneous basis, there's too much solar in California on spring, spring bright days that aren't too hot. Okay, so we had to store it. So we went to staff, we said, we want to not just quote solar, but we want to quote solar plus storage. And staff said, we can do that, but it might not be cost competitive and we might not get that many bits. We were the first CCA to do this. We got 47 bits and some of them were actually quite attractive. And now you just think of it as the norm, solar plus four hours of battery storage, right? When we Um when we proposed these things, they were radical thoughts. When we proposed, uh hey, let's not just do energy, let's take some of this excess money and um in the carbon curve. Um we actually started talking about like rebate programs for Nest thermostats and stuff. And we actually got our act together, Amy is on here someplace and she can go into infinite detail. And I encourage everybody to get an an hour of Amy's time. Um and we we actually got structured in how we were going to approach our decarbonization efforts. Became a case study for the CPUC, you know, you'll know it is our decarbonization roadmap. Okay, again, we started from the beginning with radical ideas, Brian, you know, uh was it Brian? Who asked about nuclear, right? Oh, it's John, right? You know, nuclear is a part of of a mix someplace and I myself am a fan of thorium reactors and the US quit thorium research, blah, blah, blah. We're not within a million miles of that, right? We are an organization that will go out to bid for current state of the art kind of technology and push the envelope. But we're not in a position to enter and into a twenty year research project or or whatever. Um so solar plus storage, we know that battery is insufficient. So we've entered into this larger picture for long term storage. And it frustrates some of us, you guys are gonna hate this. Um the water district just voted, they're gonna ask uh FERC. To remove their hydro generation facility at Anderson Reservoir from the official list, even though they're gonna rebuild the dam. Right, we need hydro, we need local hydro, we need reliable twenty four seven power. And yet a sister agency to us just voted within the last month. To request from FERC to remove their hydro generating capability. From the official state or federal authorized list, right? So we have this challenge in the world that we're in and I know Rod's gonna talk about this. Um I just wanted you to know a little bit about the history, the other one that happened on that first day and Rod thinks he's good for a jingle and good for a slogan. And oh yeah, if we go carbon free, I want our official slogan to be. And this was on the price thing, a hundred percent carbon free for a little bit less than PG and E. And a little bit less was one percent and we chose opportunistically over time to sometimes increase it, sometimes decrease it. But again, remember, we're dancing with elephants. PG and E, Southern California Edison and others would love for us to suddenly go out of business. They would love for us to disappear and there's.
Okay, Howard, Howard.
It's going on.
We need to keep moving here.
Go ahead, Rod.
Watch your, watch your texts here.
I'm sorry.
So I'm to just, yeah, I'm gonna briefly uh uh mention some of the challenges. And I'm gonna read them off real fast so so you understand that our formation was not at all a given. Uh in twenty fourteen, there was AB twenty one forty five, the monopoly protection bill, as it was called by Assembly Member Stephen Bradford. He's a former Southern California Edison lobbyist. It would have said people would have to opt in instead of opt out, so it would have been impossible for us to to get started against PG and E. Um I had already talked about the the efforts to try to take down marine clean energy in the beginning. Um uh former CPUC Chair Michael Picker in these years. Uh accused CCAs of destroying the perfect quote unquote regulated monopoly system. In my own city, there were two council members in mid twenty fifteen as we were doing our budget hearing. That said, you know, we're not sure about this thing, let's form a brand new sustainability commission. And then a year or so, we'll get a recommendation from them rather than put seed capital into this, which would have killed it. Uh for at least a year, there was a county supervisor. Who urged us to wait up to two years if necessary to bring every eligible city, including Milpitas on board. There was another county supervisor who was very upset in the public hearing. That cities had taken the initiative on the CCA thing, he said, the county should form our own CCA. And the cities will come running to us because they can't do this. There was a council member uh in one of our member cities who said quite openly that he didn't believe in climate change and that a modest loan. To fund our working capital was not warranted. You know, and frankly, uh there was general risk aversion to change by various public officials, so you should know that. Um although now it seems like it's just here, it was not inevitable, next slide.
And the risks have not gone away, both in our local councils and at the government level.
Well, I think some have, right, but we certainly, we're gonna talk about those risks in a bit, so in twenty seventeen. Uh we started service a year after that first board meeting in April. Uh there were legislative threats that year, we basically said, as Howard said, we want to be a hundred percent carbon free, so fifty percent. Big hydro, which is not considered by the state of California to be renewable, which I, as Howard said, is a political problem. Fifty percent renewable now, if you think about the landscape since. You'll note that now there are a lot of folks, a lot more CCAs that want clean power. Folks in the Northwest uh want some of the hydro that they're generating, that's primarily where it comes from. And the real issue and the reason we're talking about gas and nuclear is that. Uh you know, the sun doesn't always shine and the wind doesn't always blow. And the water doesn't always flow and so between these things, gas is that filler, that peaker capability that that is there on standby. Uh nuclear has long provided what's called base load, right? Uh a a constant steady supply of of energy. But when that goes away, um it's gonna be a scramble to find resources to to make that up. And so um this, this is a challenge and that's why we're talking about these. These alternate forms, including hydrogen and batteries and so forth. Twenty, let's move on, next. Twenty eighteen, at the very end of the year, we had our decarbonization strategy and programs roadmap for the first time. Uh still a landmark document, as Howard said. Uh the city of Milpitas finally said, let's, okay, we agree to ha- release our data to be studied and we'd like to join. And Howard and others went to that city council and convinced Milpitas to join us, they pr- provide a lot of loads. So we were, we were, we welcome them with open arms, next. Twenty nineteen, um by then we had. Uh let contracts for a whole number of new renewable resources across California and into Arizona. Uh solar primarily, we've tried wind, wind is hard, by now we have geothermal and other things. And this was the landmark year in which we embarked on. Uh seeing if our cities were up for considering reach codes for new buildings. And yeah, they don't have much effect right now because it takes a long time to build things. But you can imagine over thirty years that that reach code initiative is gonna. As the our building stock turns over, that reach code initiative will be uh very important, next. Um where we are uh now is a map of California. That doesn't simply have marine clean energy and a few others and Silicon Valley clean energy. But you can see that there are CCAs, community choice aggregation agencies across the state. And uh although there are renewed threats from regulation, primarily the CPUC and from the legislature. We sure have a lot more clout uh than we did just a few years ago, next slide. So we're a business as well as a public agency and uh next.
We are a business first, cities, it's hard to go out of business, but it'd be very easy for us to go out of business.
Yeah, so you know, we're fundamentally, we're an electricity provider to residents and businesses, next. We have real competition, uh PG and E is the primary, but as you may know. Uh a number of large businesses can directly source power on the grid and and take it off. So they act as a PG and E might or as as we do and they have that privilege. It's a small fraction, uh but these are the biggest businesses around. And the legislature has enabled more large entities to to get direct access, next. We are obviously subject to legislative and regulatory actions that can help or hurt our business, next. Of course, as a public agency, you're all familiar with this by now, uh we have open books, we have open meetings. Um we certainly receive uh the scrutiny of the public. Next.
PG and E doesn't have open books.
No, they don't and you know, the scrutiny is through the PUC, which is often uh to the public, uh pretty murky world. Um obviously, our competitors, including PG and E, get to see everything we do. Uh and and we don't, the the opposite is not true. We're accountable to member cities and ultimately to our voters, next. An important distinction, obviously, to a business is that when we have excess revenue, it's not called profit. Uh it is excess revenue and it gets returned uh or reinvested. Um per our mission, right? So we don't have shareholders to pay off and we do not pay uh ten million dollar salaries to. Uh or stock bonuses to our executives, sorry, Girish, next slide. So I think it's important for you to think about ways that were unlike a city. Besides the fact that we're a business, the first, next. First is, we are not the sole provider, right? We have competition, our customers have choices, next.
For five dollars, if one of our citizens got upset, they could switch back to PG and E. So there's no barrier for them to switch back to PG and E and there's no difference in their service and electricity is electricity.
Right. The other thing really we we wanted to to tell you about is how we are different than cities in terms of the leverage. The amount of revenue per employee, as you can see here, approaches ten, eight and a half to be exact. If you compare that to cities where you're sole provider for streetlights and. Um contracted services for law enforcement and so forth. You can see that we have an order of magnitude, larger leverage. A very small staff um uh providing great uh great value through uh the revenue stream. So it's important for you to think about the fact that. Uh when you make a request to staff, you ask them to do something, you do not, they do. Our Girish and his team do not have the same resource base as cities do. And are really are focused on this very specialized mission. That was the point of this slide, let's move on.
Let you know you have five minutes left.
Thank you, so effective governance, um. Here, here basically are some of the bottom line tips that may not be apparent from the other presentations. That you've heard, we said earlier that our formation was not a given and neither is our ongoing success. So you all now carry this torch and and I'd like to make these uh general points, first, next. So keep the mission and the big picture in mind as you take action. You could get buried in uh program details forever, I guarantee it, it's really fun if you're an engineer like me. But you gotta keep the mission and the big picture in mind, next. Be prepared to adapt to circumstances, there are a lot of external forces acting on you. The cost of energy, the cost of uh uh regulation, uh the contractors, some are going to disappoint you. The legislature will pull surprises uh at the eleventh hour and you have to be prepared to adapt, next. Of course, you have to cover the business basics, next. You you need to serve customers well because they have a choice, next. You need to understand the risks, next. So that's competition. What is, what is PG and E gonna do, what are large companies gonna do, do you? Can you keep them even though they have the option of going direct access, for example, next. Obviously, the legislative and regulatory actions uh are are risk and. Um agencies like the CPUC have major stakeholders that are are pressing on them. So our voice is not necessarily the one that prevails, um Melissa can tell you about that, next. And then you have to think about the risks and create and maintain a financial reserve responsive to risks. I think our reserve is up to about one hundred and eighty days. Uh uh correct me if I'm wrong, but we're very proud that we were able to build that reserve of about half a year. But I think uh you all have to keep an eye out uh on. How much of that reserve is appropriate or if more in fact is needed based on the risks that you see. And forecast uh over time, next slide. Well, what's key to making this thing go as a business? You have these thirty one employees that are absolutely key to its success, next. This is us uh from a year ago, the last time staff got together, so we have some new faces and some have departed for other CCAs. This is a small, highly leveraged staff, as we've said, uh which is in really high demand.
What, I gotta interject just one quick thing, Rod, the reason people come to work at Silicon Valley Clean Energy is is for the mission. Right, we're a mission driven organization, it started with being carbon free, now we talk very openly about changing the world and bending the carbon curve. This is maybe different than some of the people who would work in your city and public works or finance or fill in the different jobs. Almost every person you run into in this organization is so extraordinarily passionate about the mission. And because of that, they do extraordinary things that you may not see in a normal city staff.
So a few of the people in this picture have moved on largely to other CCAs, there's been a a real opportunity as a result of. Of formation, so uh next. Please uh continue, we think we we have hired and retained the best. This is a a team unparalleled amongst its peers and our suggestions to you would be to, next. Keep the team focused on priorities, things that are really important. So uh you, the kind of good questions you're asking are are important and over time, you know, your asks of staff. Uh ought to be those things that really are the priorities. Keep them fairly compensated, uh well appreciated and and happy. Uh obviously key to any workforce. Uh but I I think Howard and I feel very strongly that that Girish and his team are are the best of any of of our peers. And we know many of them, we considered hiring many of them and we hired Girish and company.
You will find that the benefits and stuff of this organization are a little more like a startup than like a city. And the CEO has a lot more flexibility uh to do things to help make sure staff is socially and 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 professionally happy.
Right, next. And so finally, uh we'd like you to consider making policy decisions. Uh input as the process unfolds and then let staff do their execution and sweat the small stuff.
There is.
One more, one more slide.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
So finally, um you know, as we've indicated, there are a lot of external risks and. We would encourage you to help as a board member. In helping manage those external risks and take advantage of opportunities by building relationships with key stakeholders. Next. So you can build relationships with directors and other CCAs uh through CalCCA, the lobbying organization, next. You can participate with them uh on ledge action days. Calls or texts to assembly members, Senate, members of the Senate. Uh stay in touch and listen carefully to grassroots groups who have lots of good ideas. Next, you can attend the Haas Energy Institute Economics and Energy Training Class, which is excellent, given by Severn Warrenstein and others. You can tune into Stanford, uh Stanford Energy's uh lectures and seminars to learn more about the landscape, next. You can uh participate in uh with other agencies, learn about their mission. The PUC, the CEC, the ISO, uh all important to the landscape, next. Obviously, uh as I said, spending time in Sacramento or talking to folks uh who are legislating, making law there. Who are legislating, making law there. Next. And then getting to know the programs and mission of those agencies that share our decarbonization goals. Every one of these, both of these play important role in moving programs forward. And that's the last slide other than for any questions.
Thank you. This comment later. There is a structure set up for governance. It showed the flow chart and annual flow chart. But the goals, the compensation, the strategic plan and the budget are all integrated together. So that all the decisions are made at the appropriate times and the staff can focus in the most efficient manner. Talk to Girish about that structure, but it's key to achieving a smooth flowing governance here.
As I, yeah, I mean, we could talk on and on, but I think.
Yeah, we we have a lot of material still to get to.
Yes, you do.
But really appreciate your your experience, sharing your wisdom. And the history of the organization. That's really, really valuable to hear. So.
Thank you.
Yes, the Rod and Howard show, big success. Thank you. So let's just see if there are any burning director questions. We do have a lot more to get to. So just if you have a burning question. Raise your virtual hand. And I not seeing any hands go up, so thank you.
We're available via email if anybody's got any random thoughts or anything.
Great. Good. Yes. And i- if you could perhaps share your email through Girish to the the new board members, that would be, that would be very helpful. Okay. Oh, Director Way.
I know time is of essence, but I do have one burning question. Of all these presentations, all this work. Congratulations and we like to follow up. My question is, how is there, I didn't hear, how do we drive? Initiatives for new technology and investors into clean energy, clean, you know, what we want to do in the future.
Okay, the the answer to almost every question is going to be the same. You talk to Girish. And the answer to that question, and I, it's not meant to be flippant, right? This organization is very tightly wound and very organized and structured. And there's a system by which new ideas work their way into the to the culture here. It happens very quickly, unlike cities. This is not. That type of thing. The CEO is your best buddy with any ideas. You want to make a video, you want your your heat pump in it. You want new investment, you talk to Girish. That is the only way to make this happen. Okay?
Got it.
And I I would add that, you know, on these decarbonization programs, Amy is a wealth of information. You should know that the Air District has on the order of $150 million that they spend every year. Also largely on getting rid of fossil fuels. And very often, right, we're asking questions about how we team up with with the Air District to to make progress on these goals.
Thank you for that question too, and we are capturing questions. We will follow up with all of you. So we're doing a little bit of a change. So we have about 10 minutes left. I do want to have. One of our directors give you an update and that's gonna be Melissa Charles, who's gonna talk about legislative and regulatory issues. She's gonna take five minutes and then we'll have five minutes for wrap up. So with that, Melissa.
Hi, everyone. Melissa Charles, Director of Policy. Feel free to also call me now, but it's my nickname. Okay, so I have five minutes. I'm gonna be really fast. I thought I had finished. So Rod and Howard talked about sort of the legislative and regulatory landscape, talked about. The murky world of the regulatory landscape. And so what I'm gonna do is just give you a very brief. Overview of the California Public Utilities Commission. Next slide. And just to let you know, my team right now is a small team. It consists of me. It also consists of Kunam Agarwal, who's our senior regulatory analyst. We are in the process of hiring a senior government affairs manager. Who will do a lot of external facing work and then another regulatory analyst. And what we do on my team is basically navigate that murky world by advocating policies that advance SEC goals. So we do it at the legislative level. We do it through co- building coalitions with other stakeholders, including our trade association, CalCCA. And lastly, through appearing before the CPUC to provide input that informs their policies. Okay, next slide. So the CPC history, it was formed in 1911. It was the Railroad Commission. It went through various incarnations throughout the 20th century and today CPC regulates. Privately owned electric, natural gas, telecommunications, water, railroad, rail transit and passenger transportation companies. It's a huge agency, a lot of different departments. So yeah, regulates a lot and oversees a lot. Budget as of this fiscal year is 1.7 billion. They are up for their budget for the next fiscal year. I think it'll be around the same. And they have a big staff. It's, when I just checked yesterday, it was 1407, 1,407 employees. Most of them are located in San Francisco where the CPUC is headquartered, but they also have offices in Sacramento and Los Angeles. Next slide. CPC typically has five commissioners. Right now, they only have four. I won't go through all of them, but you can see. That they were all appointed within the last three years. And one of the commissioners just turned out and has become the head of the Air Resources Board. And we are hoping to see a new commissioner come in coming weeks and months. Yes, and the mission of the CPC is to empower California through safe, clean and affordable utility services and infrastructure. Next slide. So I'm not gonna go through this. This is sort of a lot of things, but the one thing I will say very quickly is the CPC has a very involved. And detailed public process. The one thing I will highlight in this slide is that the legal process that formed, it's a very legal process and it forms a basis of. Orders and decisions. And so when you hear me talking and update, you'll hear me talk about various decisions and those decisions basically adopt policies. That we are often impacted by either via sub being subjected to regulation. Or wanting to take part in various programs. Next slide. Okay, so the CPC regulates the investor-owned utilities differently than they do the CCA. So the CPC basically sets and designs the rates for investor-owned utilities like PG&E. And regulates electric and gas safety. They also develop and oversee various policies and programs that are implemented by IOUs. And IOUs can propose their own programs, but they are subject to CPC approval. And they also oversee planning and procurement of energy as well. Next slide. So the CPC's oversight of CCAs, the regulation, they have a lighter regulatory hand. So at a high level, they certify CCA implementation plans. They also have the authority to ensure that CCA is purchasing enough energy to serve their customers. That's through what we call their resource adequacy program. So it's related to reliability and making sure the grid is reliable. They also, CCA is like SEC are also subject to renewable portfolio standard in terms of meeting certain renewable procurement goals. And also related CPC oversees the integrated resources planning process to ensure. That all. CCA's IOUs load serving entities or LSEs meet certain green half gas reduction and reliability goals. So Girish talked about the green half gas reduction goal that we have, but there's also state goals as well. And CPC oversees that process. And finally, CPC also authorizes what we call non-bi- capable charges. That affect our rate. So those are charges that both are. CCA's customers and utility customers pay. And you'll hear me talk about that in the future related to a specific exit fee called the PCIA in the future. So just know that all of these are ways in which we are impacted by the CPUC. Next slide. And so this is, I think this is my final slide, but we can talk. The key concerns and there's a, you know, with CCAs. I think Rod was talking about, you know, former CPC presidents having concerns. But I think one of the key concerns for the CPC broadly, not just with CCAs, is about reliability, making sure that the lights stay on. And making sure that all these different load serving entities, the utilities, the CCAs are able to coordinate. And there's enough oversight to make sure that the grid as a whole is reliable. And then the other issue is affordability. It's basically making sure rates remain reasonable at a reasonable level. And understanding who pays for the cost to maintain the grid. And I think that's it. Next slide. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we'll see if there are any burning questions. We still have to have time for public comment. So if you have something you really want to ask right now, please raise your virtual hand. And I am not seeing any hands go up, so I'm gonna check for public comment. Clark, did we receive any email public comments?
No emailed comments received.
Okay, and any members of the public who wish to speak now, please raise your virtual hand. And I'm not seeing any hands go up, so I'll close public comments. Girish, do you have any final comments on this part of the the agenda?
First, thank you very much for your attention. I know we covered a lot. Again, please take up our invitation to connect with us on your questions that will really, really help us. Tailor how we can provide you information and keep you engaged and really appreciate the questions we got today. We will follow up by sending you the deck, the information, contact information for Rod and Howard. And I'll also give you a heads up about the next two. Orientation sessions. The first one's going to be on legislative and regulatory issues and power supply. That'll be the first hour and a half. The next hour and a half update is going to be on all the decarbonization programs and finance. So that's three hours of planned orientation and of course, any one-on-one sessions, we would really welcome your questions. So after this meeting, please send us your questions by email. It will really help us and back to you, Gustav.
Thank you. Yeah, great job by staff and Rod and Howard. Everyone can tell you, you put a lot of work into distilling this down. Very packed presentation. So I'm gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is board member announcements and direction for future agenda items. Let's see if anyone raises their hand. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. So with that. This this very informative workshop is adjourned. Thank you all for participating.